Good evening. Before we start the meeting, we wanted to start with prayer. Garrus Hudson is here tonight. Garrus is the lead pastor at Crosspoint Community Church. And thank you so much for being here tonight. If you'd please lead us in prayer, we'd sure appreciate that.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we gather today seeking your guidance and wisdom as we serve our community. God, we pray that you would bless this city council meeting with your presence. Grant us discernment to make decisions that honor you and uplift our neighbors. Fill their hearts with compassion and unity and commitment to justice. May our words and actions reflect your love and truth, fostering peace and prosperity for all. We trust in your divine plan and ask for strength to lead with integrity. And it's in Jesus's name that we pray. Amen.
Thank you so much, Pastor.
I'd like to call the committee of the whole July 1st, 2025 to order, please. Roll call.
Daniel. Ms. D. Tim.
Here.
Larry.
Here.
Mike.
Here.
Amber.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next, I seek approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to the board. I'll second that motion.
Roll call.
Mike?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Next.
Yeah. Danny, are you here?
Yes, I'm here.
And do you want to approve the agenda? It's already done.
Next, I need approval of June 3rd, 2025, committee of the whole minutes. Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Amber?
Yes.
Daniel?
I don't know that he can hear you. Hang on just a second. Daniel, do you approve the COW agenda meeting minutes from June 3rd? Can you say that again?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Next, comments from citizens, and please keep your comments as brief as you can.
Sammy Graham, 1984, South Penalto Road. The first indication of the mayor's attitude toward proper government and her intention to abide by established codes and law was when she stated, "The city council meeting that property owners should be able to do what they wanted with their property." Pardon me, that was her first warning. So we don't forget where she's led us. Here's an overview. Number one, FOIA requests have gone unanswered repeatedly. Nepotism, the city hired her daughter, sent city vehicles to her son-in-law's garage for repair. Rumor is correct, purchased a residential home in Barrington with the hope of offering a family friend a much reduced rent. The city was charged tax for vehicle repair, yet Zand Garage has no tax ID number. We still don't know where that money went. The entire process of rezoning and permanent application for Zand Garage was fraught with mistakes despite the entire process being clearly laid out on city website. Multiple building codes violations against Zand Garage have been identified and are pending further investigation. Retaliatory complaints filed against myself and Mike Zulpo for daring to voice our concern and a very near miss with Barrington property was almost sold for a fraction of the purchase price. City's tax dollars could have been squandered. The city's website being used to promote private advertisement for a friend. And the baseless and hypocritical firing of Luanne Genison, which resulted in further dividing employees and citizens, drama and distress. None of us, and especially Luanne, deserved. This is not leadership. This is an embarrassment, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good afternoon. Kenneth Lovett, 18, 702 Clearwater Road. The embarrassment just walked away, in my opinion. But I'll leave that at that. Last month marked eight years I've lived in this community. Four of those years, I've got to know some of y'all better because of the issues with waste management. My wife is sick because of these issues, and that's as far as I'm going to go with that because it's a private matter, but it will be addressed properly with the proper people. But I don't understand exactly how... I didn't write all this down because I'm frustrated and I just wanted to take the time to be able to talk. Last meeting, I tried to call in. I was away from home in Missouri, enjoying my trip, and I took the time to stop and call in and try to discuss some issues. And I was blocked from doing that because either it was malicious or I just don't know how to operate the equipment. But you can go online and you can see my photo, you can see my video, and you can hear me talking, but it couldn't come through here. And that's been more than just once, not just for me, but for other issues that they've had to try to call in on the phone because they couldn't connect to the teams because people can't do their jobs. But blaming the mayor for all these things that they continue to blame her for, she's not doing it by herself. You know, she can't do anything without y'all's approval. Is that right? Other than spending the money that she has allotted to spend to do the right things? People get up here and they... And I've been guilty sometime, but they'll get up here and say, "If you don't do something, it's going to go to court." To me, that's a threat. And you can look in the judicial things and calling out threats is a misdemeanor, and it should be called out. And I've had some issues with some people in the community here lately where I tried to call it out, and they said it wasn't a crime. I don't understand that. But I try to come up here and meet with them, and there will be no meeting and no discussion. And that's hard for me to swallow, too. But we'll have some more stuff to talk about here later with waste management. Their waste coming into Tonnytown sewer system without even ever being treated. Explosion levels as they dilute down as they're going through the open sewer in Tonnytown. I've seen some things on YouTube where sewers blew up, you know, almost killed people, did kill some people in certain areas. This needs to be addressed. And I don't know how much y'all are aware of it. I don't know how much y'all can do about it, but it's in your sewer in this town, and it needs to stop. And if we have a valve up there, I'd send somebody up there today and shut it and tell them to truck their stuff to NACCA to take care of your people. That's my opinion. But there's a lot of stuff that I want to say that I just don't recall right now. But people need to wake up and pay attention to the right things. You know, you may not agree with it, but there's more than just one person that this goes through. Our great lawyer isn't here tonight. I don't see his representative, but I don't believe that anybody here should make a move without talking to him. And I don't believe our mayor did. But he's not here to say... I don't know if he would say yes or no. But did any of y'all discuss that issue that we had last week with them before you... Ain't none of y'all lawyers. I don't understand the point here. You know, how does politics play this? Or is it just personal vendettas? I'm kind of frustrated, and I'm not taking it out on you or you or you, you know? But it's just frustrating. Sometimes you get up there and you say something and you hear people laugh, and you're like, hmm, maybe I should do that every time somebody says something stupid. So I'm guilty as anybody. That's all I've got to say for now. But we do need to pay attention to waste management. We need to pay attention to what they're doing to our community. ADQ is not doing what they're supposed to do. The judge for Pollution Control and Ecology Commission works for the Pollution Control and Ecology Commission. Do you think he's ever going to vote against them? We've got a screwed up system. I don't know what we can do about it, but I'm going to be in the head of it as far as I can go until somebody changes my abilities. Thank you all.
Any more comments?
Brad Spurlock, 342 St. Yola Avenue. I want to address an email that went out earlier to you guys and has always been addressed tonight. All of you guys know that I work tirelessly trying to make everything work properly. If you guys have ever been absent, you guys have contacted me, want to meet into the meeting room with teams. And most of you guys know that I will ask you to call in early so that everything will work correctly. We have other departments that come in here and use the computer just as we do. Sometimes the settings get messed up a little bit. We may not always have it all fixed by the time the meeting. I want to let you guys know I do not do anything intentionally, nor do I do anything to censor anybody. I do everything I can to make this as feasible and as accessible as possible. Just wanted to state that.
Any other citizen comments? Going once, going twice. Next, we have old business. First, we have a discussion of the creation of detailed organizational chart for the city. Mr. Wisconsin.
Thank you, Mr. Arda Money. Counsel and people in the audience, you have a copy of the proposed organizational chart along with the resolution behind it to adopt the charts should we choose to do so, to send it to counsel to do so. Do have a few statements about this to talk about the reason for the chart structure the way that it is. You know, I think we've seen in recent events the critical need for having an organizational chart in place. It's something that we did have in 2014. It was adopted in ordinance 2014-12-491. It included an organizational chart, and it also had code section 31.07, which had that chart as part of our city code. For whatever reason, about a year later, in November of 2015, the entirety of municipal code section 31.07 and the ordinance creating the organizational chart were repealed by the council. So for 10 years, the city of Tonnytown has operated without an organizational chart. It's not acceptable. An organizational chart is not just a good idea for the city. It's employees to know the reporting structure. It's also a good idea to let the public know what the city's organizational structure is. The statutory authority for creation of organizational charts and the departments that lie within the city are solely within the purview of city councils. I have emailed John Wilkerson and Mark Hayes with the municipal league. I received emails back from them. I asked them that same question. I said, "Could you please..." You know, my question was, "Could I please get a clarification on who in the city of first class decides what departments a city can have? For example, departments determine department heads, blah, blah, blah." He said, "This is from Mr. Alexander. In cities organized under the mayor council form of government, the city council creates departments of the municipality." From Mark Hayes, who is the head of the Arkansas Municipal League, "Yes, sir. The council determines which departments exist in the city." There are a couple of things in the chart that may look a little different than what you're used to. One of them puts accounting under the clerk treasurer. The clerk treasurer by statute is responsible for the finances of the city. And I looked for... Well, I looked in this document right here, Arkansas City Clerks, Recorders, Treasurers Association. It was created by the municipal league attorney, David Schoen, in 2020. And on page 96, Part C, Accounting and Reporting, "The duties of the city clerk or recorder and treasurer in accounting and reporting are governed by Arkansas Municipal Accounting Law of 1973." So, and it has all the essential functions of what a recorder treasurer is supposed to be. So that's why that's in place. The other one, I'm trying to keep this as short as I can because I know we've got a lot on the agenda tonight. The other one is code enforcement going under the planning and the building department. Mr. Spurlock created this chart. We've had discussions about it. I've also discussed it with Mr. Latham and Chief Genison, the purpose for doing such. And Chief Genison, if you don't mind explaining why code enforcement belongs under planning and building, and Mr. Spurlock, if you don't mind adding to that and explaining why it's there, it would be much appreciated. Thank you.
So our experience with code enforcement, being with us, the majority of the time in conversations, we're deciding on, you know, what violations they have. Majority of the time he's spent conferring and talking with Brad. The police department deals with some codes and can enforce those codes. However, it's a little different at our level versus code enforcement level. They're more involved when it comes into the building processes, zoning, and things of that nature than what police officers are. So having somebody that, when you have something that comes in that you can ask questions to and have that conversation to figure it out, it's a better communication process, in my opinion. The enforcement side of things, we've already worked that out with the court. There's options on, going back to paper tickets that they can issue citations off of or warnings from. All of that can be taken care of. And then even to say if we need, as the police department, to show up and take enforcement action at their advice, we can absolutely do that. It's not that we're completely washing our hands of it. It's just, there's a little bit more challenges outside of even that scope is that when we hire somebody in, the requirements to be on our end of the building are a little bit different than just hiring somebody to do this job for code enforcement. They have to have certain certifications and qualifications have to be met. We had an interview process for code enforcement. Had a couple interviews, and our background investigation packet, we did not get any of those turned back in. So I guess there was no interest to further that. But it's a little bit stricter requirements to have access on our end of the building as well as to use our computers and anything on that end. So it just adds another level or layer that we have to kind of work through. It's not the end of it. Mr. Belsner doing code enforcement was a retired police officer. Those credentials were easy to get back. So it was kind of this seamless transition back to our end of the building. However, I think Brad can probably speak to it. The only times that he was on our end is when he needed to actually sit down at a computer and work on it because that's where his desk essentially was. The majority of the time, he was on this end, conferring with Brad on decisions and stuff, so.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay. So my goal on city council is, as much as we can, to let the mayor, who's the chief executive of the city, get what they want, right? Whoever that happens to be. Our current mayor very much would prefer that code enforcement report through police. Some of that, I don't know all the reasons, but I know some of that is because there's some teeth to that. So I know that you're amenable to whatever the mayor would ultimately like to do, but all the things that you just said, that makes me go, "Oh, yeah, I didn't think about that." So how difficult is it to get somebody on that end of the building? I know you just said with that background check situation that you, "Hey, we need you to fill this stuff out," and they never came back. Is that, I mean, is it just because it's a hassle?
It is not difficult to get somebody on our end. There's a few trainings and certificates that they have to get. The background packets, about 50 pages. It is very in-depth. However, it's not possible to get on that end of the building. It's easily doable. If there's concern of the enforcement side of things, there's, at any point in time, whether code enforcement's with us or under a different department, if code enforcement needs enforcement action to have a little more teeth or anything to that nature, or if somebody is hostile to them, what we have always done is to let us know so we can send an officer to take that enforcement action instead of the code enforcement person.
Okay.
If they're through us, and, you know, it's not something that we invest in the training. We hire you non-certified, and then we train you to be a police officer. If you're non-certified, you're just going to be code enforcement. If you are previous law enforcement and we can utilize that, then we can bring you up to a standard where you are certified and you are able to carry a gun and a badge and act in that capacity through the department. But it just depends on who's applying and what certifications they previously have coming into it. It's not that we look to bring every code enforcement officer up to a police officer standard. We were just looking to fill the role of code enforcement officer, so.
And our previous code enforcement officer, Mr. Belsner, who I know just retired, I know he had some concerns about that position being filled by a policeman or that idea. Some of that being that it all feels a little heavy-handed when a police officer shows up or, right, somebody who's on that end. So is there some way through that potential problem?
It's just, it's tricky, and it gives some opportunity for either misunderstandings or misrepresentations. Our concern is, we don't want somebody to come in in a code enforcement situation but feel that they're acting as a police officer. Things, our scopes are completely different. Code investigating something versus a police officer investigating, it is two different scopes, and we don't want to blur those lines. So, you know, the side of being a police officer but also doing code enforcement, the police officer side of that is almost completely removed, other than the fact that you're authorized to carry a weapon to defend yourself. We don't utilize code enforcement to go make arrests. We don't utilize them to do any kind of criminal reports, anything to that nature. We treat it the same as if they're just code enforcement. So we try to keep those two as separate as possible.
So if a code enforcement officer had a question about planning, building, permits, and they reported to you, where would they get those questions answered? From you?
I can do my best, but I am far from the expert, so I would refer them to Brad or somewhere.
Okay. So even if they reported to you, they'd still be going down the hall to get those answers?
And we would have, you know, Belsner and I would have a lot of discussions on this. You know, my expertise is not in that area. I read code and, you know, when I'm reading that, a lot of times, like criminal, it's black and white, and we're going to take it at the value that we're reading it. Whereas code, there's a lot of different other factors that come into play. You can read it as black and white and just enforce off of that, but, you know, there's a whole other aspect to that that we are not very knowledgeable in. So I don't think that we make the best for giving the advice on theirs, whereas somebody who deals with it every day would be better at it.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate that.
Would you like to speak, Mr. Spurlock?
I will reiterate what Chief Genison has just said. Another part to this was, after kind of visiting with Mark when we were discussing this, the role of the code enforcer, obviously administratively from the paperwork was, you know, kind of my concern. I will let you know, we have the same software we use in our permits department as what the code enforcement uses. So, I mean, we could really piggyback off one another and see what's been written up. We can see what codes have been violated and definitely try to address those the best way. But going forward, too, with this chart, as you look through there, we have always kind of had the idea, who's next in line? Who's going to be the next person to jump up in case someone's to get sick, leave, unfortunately may die? So part of this was, too, if we had a code enforcer that we could bring on underneath this department, we'd kind of help them cross-train a little bit, not trying to push anybody out or get rid of anybody. But this would be definitely something that we'd like to have somebody intact, you know, as far as another building official of some sort, to learn that aspect of the job as well. Because, like I said, you never know when an accident may happen, someone's out and about. So this would kind of be a backup as well. Code enforcement, I don't know if you could say, would be, all of it's complaint-driven. So we definitely would probably feel like we might have some time to cross-train. And so that was one reason why we decided that we wanted to bring this under the planning department, building department, to more utilize probably all the services that we have. So that's what I was thinking about. Questions?
Okay. Thank you, sir. Send this to city council for a vote? Yep. Roll call.
Okay, who's seconded?
Danny. Danny.
Okay, Daniel?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Moving to city council.
Next, we have a discussion on the expansion of the planning commission to seven members. Mike?
Okay, first of all, any planning commissioners out there, this is not a slight or reflection on how I feel about the planning commission and all. I respect every one of you. I think you're all doing a fantastic job. It is not meant to be casting aspersions on the job that you're doing. This is more in line with bringing us up to what other cities around us have, and I'll get to that in just a minute. I know a few months ago, when Tom Joseph left the commission, the council voted not to refill the position. And one of the major concerns or primary concerns that I got as feedback from the council was the fact that six members leads to too many ties. Well, obviously, going to seven kind of alleviates that issue. Seven members bring us more in line with the surrounding like-sized communities. For example, Salem Springs has seven planning commissioners, Farmington, eight, Prairie Grove, seven, Pea Ridge, seven, Centerton, nine, Gentry, seven, and the county quorum court now has seven. Obviously, I left out some of the bigger cities. All of these are comparable in size to what Tonnytown is. We, as a legislative body, have always asked for more input from the community. Well, here we have an opportunity to provide two more seats to a body that helps shape the city of Tonnytown. As we all know, we're not going to stop growing. And as a matter of fact, the growth that's going to come out west is going to be substantial. It's going to be expensive commercial property. I think it would just be a plus to have a couple more people to help out with that, and I'll get to that in just a minute. I don't think we would have any difficulty filling these two spots. You know, like I say, adding two more people to the commission gives two more voices, an ability to weigh in on the growth and helping to shape Tonnytown's future. It gives the possibility of more diverse perspectives. It allows for more deliberation, which could lead to better outcomes. It allows more flexibility to divide assignments to task among committee members. And finally, it allows for more attendance flexibility. Obviously, if you have seven people, somebody's missing, you know. When you're down, when you have five and somebody misses, you know, it's a little bit more of a burden. So I'd just like council's thoughts on what they think. I did not bring a resolution to the table for this because, you know, there was, I was outvoted five to one on the keeping the sixth spot. So, you know, we might get a little pushback on this, but I think it makes sense for us to go to seven for the reasons I've stated. So I'd like to hear what you guys think.
Amber?
I don't think I have a problem with it at this point.
Tim?
It was well argued.
It was well argued, Mr. Wascoyak, and I appreciate that. And to be fair, it's the closest I've ever come to being okay with it, but I'm not quite there yet. Some of the reasons why I'm not, by the way, I mean, when you say things like perspective, I go, yes, right? I love that we've got people from various areas that can provide perspective to any area. But when it comes right down to it, what we're asking the planning commission to do and what we as council are being asked to do is difficult. It's not impossible, but it's difficult. It takes time. It takes effort. It takes some understanding. It takes some seasoning, some aging, so to speak, to understand a lot of what's going on. And I think if we take new people on council or we take new people on a planning commission, they're going to be drinking from a fire hose, as we all were, and it's a really difficult place. And I think to take two brand-new people at once and throw them in there is really difficult. And I don't know that we're going to get the diversity of you that we're hoping for. And I don't know that, from a voting standpoint, it's going to change or enforce anything at all. I don't always agree with the planning commission. I don't always agree with the planning department, and that's all right. We still, hopefully, they love me as much as I love them, which is a lot, by the way. I've got to be careful how I say that. But I'm not entirely certain that I'm willing to expand that body. I do appreciate that many of our neighbors are doing it as well. Did you find any of our neighbors that have it at five or less than seven? Okay. Yeah, so I appreciate it. I'm not, you know, I'm not as whole hog against it as I was when I walked in the room today. So there's that. But that's it. Mr. Montez, do you have any comments?
Yes, I did one. I as well am a little hesitant to go to seven, kind of for the same reason, but I wasn't opposed, you know, after thinking about it, I'm not opposed to filling that sixth spot that we didn't fill earlier. And so, you know, after hearing that, we had the sentiment that there's, that might be an amendment to just fill that sixth spot for my house and then look at putting inside enough substance to lay this. And then at least we'd have had somebody coming in, you know, or two people coming in rather and getting, whatever, an hour, we were noticing, we don't have that one.
I think we understood most of that. No? Okay. Hey, if you've got us on speaker, if you could take us off speaker, we might be able to hear you better. We're having a really hard time understanding your words.
Give me a chance to second. Yeah, that's a lot. Is this any better?
Oh, that's a lot better, yeah. You want to try all that again?
Yeah, I could try it, yeah. Listening to your point and Mr. Wascoyak's point, I kind of came into the meeting thinking that we have an opportunity to fix filling that sixth slot that we didn't fill when Mr. Joseph had left. I don't know if I'm ready to go to seven. I feel that we're kind of stacking the commission at that point. So I would be amenable to going to a six-person planning commission versus going seven.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Montez. And to follow up on that, you know, I'd rather go seven with an odd number than six. But, you know, I feel a little bit like, you know, right now in this country, depending on who the president happens to be in at a given time, we want to change the nature of the Supreme Court, right? And I think, oh, we have nine. Well, maybe we should have 11. Maybe we should have 13. Maybe we should have 23. I think there just, there comes a point where we just go, the body is what the body is. I do like an odd number, which is odd considering that we are an even number, but we've got the mayor who can break ties. But I, you know, I don't know. I just, I don't, I don't think I look at it and say it's broken and therefore needs to be fixed, no matter how we got here. And I don't entirely understand why we got here, but I know that there was, there were reasons that I probably wouldn't have agreed with then, but I'm just not 100% certain that I'm ready to go forward now. So I don't know. Your thoughts, Larry?
My thoughts? Seven, nine, 11, none of those numbers bothered me, but part of the argument we initially had was, you know, well, if you go to an even number, as you said, we can't get a quorum. So if you have five, odd number, yep, that is if everybody's present. As I say, seven, it matters not to me. I mean, if we have people that are willing, and we've had some great candidates, we really have, and turned people away regretfully, and if they wanted to come back, I would probably be amenable to a seven. And that's where I'm at.
Okay. So there's nothing I've got to take to council, obviously. We didn't have a resolution draft because I truly didn't know where the, where it would end up on this. But I do think, after hearing what I've heard, that I will probably address this again at the next Cal.
The one thing that I think, yeah, well, and it's not something we can bring to the next meeting anyway, but are we going to have two from out of, as before?
Well, there is some movement on that in the fact that, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the state passed Act, I think it's 319, House Bill 1510, they basically stripped the cities of any authority over planting zones outside of the city limits. So we basically have no input in what goes on in the so-called planting zones. So that's another thing to think about. I don't know how we address that. I guess you're talking about annexation, if you want more city property down the road. So let me chew on that a little bit and talk with the commissioners and with the planning department. And I'm kind of leaning towards bringing forth a resolution for the next Cal and discussion to go to seven, just so we have the odd number. But if you don't mind putting that off till then.
Absolutely.
Unless anybody else has something else to add to that.
I want to make sure I get this right. You're tabling your own discussion.
Well, kind of, sort of, because I didn't bring, I didn't bring a resolution forward because, like I said, I didn't know where council would fall on it. And it's not something that we have to do right away anyway. It's not an emergency situation we have to address. But, you know, anyway, yes.
Fair enough.
I am.
All right. Thank you.
I don't guess we need to have a motion to table because we don't have a resolution or anything, so, all right.
So this is just discussion only?
Okay. Next, new business. No, excuse me. Discussion of code amendments on 153.170 and 153.171.
No, you've got an email retention policy.
Oh, I'm sorry. Boy, did I have a, absolutely.
And I am going to ask, there's so much on this, so much on this, but I do want to, we've got so much on the table tonight, and there's, again, there's nothing that I'm going to bring forward as far as for a vote. I've got a couple of things that I'm looking at. I'll tell you why. I want to give you guys more information. I've got a ton, and I've tried to sort through it for the last month, and I just can't figure out what I think is the most germane for you guys to have to discuss this. But what I do want you to think about, the state basically leaves it to our discretion as far as an email retention policy. Now, obviously, there are certain things that we have to abide by when it comes to federal and state law. Like, we have to permanently maintain ordinances, city council minutes, resolution, annual financial audits, and year-end financial statements. So those are things that, I mean, they're untouchable. But our current code, I think, is unacceptable and it's ordinance 2015-10-551, and Section 1 of that ordinance reads, and I'll quote, "A policy of destroying or purging non-essential electronic mail and other unneeded records be performed every 30 days." Obviously, the problem with that is the reader is the arbiter of what is unneeded and non-essential, and that's problematic. You know, we've heard a lot about destruction of emails up here. It's happened in the national news. So it is a serious issue that I think we need to address. I do have a couple of sample ordinances that I've kind of pulled together, but really, this is something I want you guys to have more information on. So if you don't mind, again, I'm pushing this back another month, but it's not an emergency that we do this right now. But I'd real, I mean, I've got a lot of stuff here that I could talk, but we've got a lot of other stuff and a lot of other people that need to hear their things tonight. So if you don't mind if we put this off another month, is that okay?
It's on you. It's a discussion.
It's, but that is what I want you, I do want you to think about. Right now, I'm leaning towards three years or five years retention of all emails. You know, we don't get to decide, you know. Matter of fact, I would like, I wouldn't care, and I know it's probably not possible, I wouldn't care if the public had access to whatever city emails I get. You know, it's, I mean, there are some, obviously, that probably aren't foible, so, you know, we can protect certain things, but, you know, I'm leaning towards either a three-year or a five-year retention on all emails. We don't get to decide what's non-essential or unnecessary. So, because sometimes you just never know. I mean, you really don't. I mean, obviously, we know junk email, but even that doesn't take up a lot of space in the box. So anyway.
My box is full.
I want to give you all some more things to chew on before we discuss this more in depth, and if it's okay with everybody else, I'll just table this once again. I apologize, but for another month.
I'm glitched on this one. I don't know if you can hear me.
Go ahead, Dan.
I'm going to check out my speaker again. I, I'm a little tore back on this issue because we're saying that everything's destroyed that's not essential after 30 days. Is that correct?
That's what the ordinance allows us to do. It says, you know, I haven't deleted an email since I've taken office. That's just me. Other people I know probably go through and, you know, that's fine, but that's why we need clarity on the issue, I believe.
But at the same time, my Microsoft or whatever, you know, domain I'm using for the city, I have at the top of my thing, it says that all the emails that are in this email domain are retained for seven years. So if they're retaining it on their server somewhere, how is it being deleted every 30 days if it's, if it's quote-unquote, non-essential?
I'm not sure if that's what the stated, if that's from the people who service the email account or not. I don't know where that line comes from, but yeah, it's right under the two bar in our email. It says retention, retention policy, and it gives the expiration date seven years out from today's date.
Correct.
But I don't know who put that in there. I don't know if that came from the tech company. I don't know if that's something the city added in years ago. I just don't know. I don't have an answer for that. And probably I should get that answer. That's a good question to ask. But yes, and that's another reason that I keep all mine because, you know, it says it right there when you open your email.
Yeah. That's what I've always, you know, understood it to be is that, you know, wherever, if it was telecom, whoever set up all the emails and all the, you know, everybody's got their own individual domain with their email address that's from a government entity. But I would assume they're all saved for seven years on, it's an Outlook domain, but we were able to change the domain to say TonnyTownAR.gov. But yeah, I don't know. So I guess if you want to discuss this at a later date, we can do that, but I would think that was pretty standard.
Yeah. And the reason, the reason I do want to push it back, because like I said, I've got a couple of different ordinances. I'm kind of going through the language of those, and there's so much stuff. Like I said, the state really doesn't give us any guidance, and there's a lot of code out there in Arkansas code. And, you know, it leaves it to us, except on a certain essential items that you have to keep permanently, in which I delineated those at the beginning. And it even states in that ordinance the things that we must keep permanently. So the ordinance is, again, for anybody who wants to reference it, is 2015-10-551. And again, the most problematic section, there's only one section that's really problematic, it's Section 1. So do we, do we just rewrite that ordinance, eliminating that section? Do we draft a whole new ordinance? Because technology has obviously changed since 2015, too. So, you know, that's where I'm kind of torn. I hate pushing things off again, but man, there is a, when you start digging into this, there is a lot of stuff on this. So, you know, if you all want to help me out and come to the table with something in a month, I would appreciate it, but I will certainly come up with a couple of different ordinances that we can, we can look over.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Danny.
So now, having.
Is it another discussion only?
Yes, that's with discussion only. And now we have a discussion only on code amendments on 153.170 and 153.171. Mr. Burris?
Thank you, Chairman. Appreciate it. This isn't a discussion only. This is a follow-up to a discussion we had at the last Cal, and we just want to try to pick back up where we were there. So when we talked a month ago, the idea was that we would look at these animals. We had, as many of you know, there was a chicken, a rooster.
Larry.
Larry, yeah. Some call him Lenny, apparently. We're a little torn on the name, but I like Larry, was running amok. And because Larry was running amok, there were some people who were very, very concerned, and so we had to do something about that. So we're talking about updating the Tonny Town code regarding animals. Mr. Eitman, our attorney, was kind enough to take the request from last month's meeting and compile it into the changes that you guys see before you. He and I took Mayor Russell's suggestion to only allow roosters on half an acre or more. There was another suggestion to house chickens or fowl 15 feet away from a lot line. I believe that was Councilmember Ibarra. HOA communities are always permitted to make stricter guidelines regarding what they want to do, which prohibit specific animals within their borders. But we, as we were looking at this, Mr. Eitman and I, we removed the animal count on the animal piece, that is, the Animal Farm 153.170. We removed the animal count in part because it prohibited anyone from having more than four pets, which is completely subjective. So again, if you have three goldfish and a dog, and then you get a cat, you're breaking the rules of the town. So we just removed the animal count and And, and the way that that is now written is that the number of animals allowed per acre may vary, but that is based on the health and welfare. So we can handle that as needed. It has come to my attention, even tonight since we came in this room, that one of our council members would prefer that we change that rooster prohibition from not, not a half, but to two. I am open to whatever the council desires regarding lot size. But I can tell you, anecdotally, my neighbors that are basically up between the road and our house, they are on .8 acres. They have a lovely rooster named Elvis, nice little fellow. And we love Elvis, and we have no trouble with Elvis. But that's what we're talking about here, is these two codes and just allowing hobby chickens to be allowed, allowing roosters to be allowed, which are currently prohibited. And I'm open and amenable to whatever you guys have to share.
Well, yes, last week, the half acre came up. I believe Mayor mentioned that. And she also mentioned that distance of 15 feet, but that I can recall. I went ahead and sent out a text because ultimately, the decision we're making on the code here affects all citizens that will be near a rooster. So I went ahead and reached out to my neighbors and to just another large group of Tawnytown residents and just asked their opinion. I didn't give them mine, just let them know that roosters are currently not permitted, that a half acre was on the table, you know, and what was their thoughts and opinions on the size of a lot and what would, what they felt would be a nuisance, you know, in having a rooster that close to them. I will say, the majority didn't like roosters at all. Some, there was one that said they had no problems with roosters. They loved to hear them crow and, and all of that. But most of them didn't like roosters. But even of that group, they weren't opposed to allowing them, most of them, a couple of them were. But I will say, I'm not saying this because it affects me at this point, but I'm on a half, I'm on one and a half acres, and so is my neighbor to my right on an acre and a half. And they did have a rooster at one point, and that was really, really close. And it was a nuisance. They don't have it anymore. But behind me, my neighbor has 17 acres. I can hear the rooster crow, and it doesn't bother me whatsoever. So I definitely think a half acre is way too small. An acre even is just not, I don't feel like enough distance to not be a nuisance. You do have to think about the neighbor that doesn't want a rooster or doesn't want to hear a rooster. I think two acres, in my opinion, I don't, it doesn't, you know, there may be other opinions out here, would be a good distance. You're still going to hear the rooster crow, but it may not be as annoying as, as less than that. So that's just my opinion. And then the other thing to bring up is we don't put on here how many roosters. So it really leaves it to an undetermined amount of roosters. They could have 10 roosters on two acres. So we should probably have a limit to the amount of roosters allowed as well. So that should be another discussion. What are you laughing at, Mike? You want a neighbor with 10 roosters?
No, I did have a neighbor, a couple of houses down from me. I live on an acre or two, and he had a rooster. But they weren't permitted under the code at that time, I guess. It didn't last very long. So we didn't take citizen comments. This may be a good time for citizen comments on this one.
Oh, wow. You're correct. I haven't taken those.
I will say, people have strong opinions about the rooster on, you know, so it might be a good thing to hear.
I can understand that.
Is there a citizen out there that wants to comment on roosters?
Wow.
Wow.
Leaving it up to us?
And my thing on, okay, so, so if you have two acres, but you have your chicken house right next to your property line, and your neighbor's there, it doesn't matter.
You gotta, you gotta probably specify like we did here, 15 feet off, you know.
Okay, 15 feet off property line.
I'm not saying 15 feet. I'm saying if you have an, if you have two acres, it definitely shouldn't be 15 feet.
Wow. Now you're dictating where they can put their hen house?
Well, what's, you know.
No free range?
I mean, what's the point of having 15 feet in here? That's exactly what we were doing anyway.
I think, I think we're opening a whole can of worms right here, I think. But anyway.
Well, we could just not allow roosters.
Danny.
So I'll have to switch back over. I gotta switch back and forth from headphones to speaker, or the regular phone. I don't, I don't know. I'm a little torn on both of this because one of my neighbors has a rooster. And it's not in my subdivision, but the lots that back up to my lot, he's probably two parcels down from me, and they've got one. And I hear it, but when I'm inside and I'm sleeping, I don't hear it in the morning. And I, I feel like, yeah, we're starting to put a lot of parameters on people and what they can do on their land. And I don't like, I don't like stepping on toes like that. And like Larry's saying, you know, open up a can of worms. But, I mean, a little more than half an acre, I'd say maybe an acre, I'd be amenable and, you know, put some sound barriers between neighbors. I don't know if we want to go and put regulations on how far in on their land they need to put it or stuff like that.
Okay, here's a suggestion. What if we have, roosters only at two acre lots are better? The people you talk to, would they be amenable to that?
As far as I can tell.
Okay, a suggestion. I'm open to what you guys have to say. And then one rooster per acre?
Actually wrote that down on here.
Okay.
But you probably should have a max.
Okay. Well, I, here's what I think. And some of it is because, you know, we moved to Tawnytown on purpose. Tawnytown's agrarian. It's just agrarian, right? So I understand not everybody here is agrarian, but part of the charm of Tawnytown is that it's agrarian. So roosters do make noise, yes. And we want to be, we want to understand that and care for the neighbors that maybe don't want it. But dogs bark, right? I mean, animals make noise, parrots squawk, and there's just, there's a lot that can happen. So I'm not crazy about the idea of a max. I'm not crazy about the two acre. But if that's what it takes for everybody to be happy, and we can move through that, then, again, I'm, I'm very much open to it. But I don't want my neighbors to have to get rid of their dogs, and I don't want my neighbor to have to get rid of Elvis. Elvis, if you're watching, I love you. So I don't know. But Amber, what do you think?
And it's probably a zoning thing as much as anything. I mean, if, if you're zoned agri, or whatever the case may be.
Yeah.
I wrote that as well. I mean, ag, it's a farm. We gotta limit roosters on a farm, so that's a whole different plan. It's really hard when you're opening up a nuisance, which there's a lot of towns, I looked it up today, that don't even allow roosters. I mean, it's just, it's not that they don't allow dogs. We know that dogs can bark. But roosters are just one of those that can be a nuisance, that are just not allowed in a lot of towns. Fayetteville, Little Rock, of course, we're kind of an ag community, so. But I feel like, I don't like putting restrictions on it. But if you don't, wow. I wouldn't want to be the resident that there's no restrictions and my neighbor on two acres has 10 roosters. That would not be nice. It wouldn't be fun. So you got to think about all of it, and I know that's hard to do, so.
Mike? Chief, you get many complaints on roosters in Tawnytown?
Not yet.
So it's not been a source of calls to
Well, we don't, we're not, we were not, I mean, we have no roosters allowed.
I'm sorry?
I mean, it's in the code that we, there should be no roosters in Tawnytown. There are.
There are, yeah. But they're not. I'm good with the enclosure, placement of enclosures being at 15 feet. I think that's, I think that's fair.
I mean, if we're going to expand that, that was 15 feet if you're on half an acre. Don't you think that we should maybe make that a little bit further off the property line if we're doing an acre and a half? I don't really have a suggestion. That's just a thought.
Well, this is hen enclosures. So I mean, I guess you're going to throw a rooster in there down the end, but.
Well, if there are roosters already, and they're breaking the code, but we have no complaints about them, I mean, that's telling. And I think part of that is, we live in an agrarian town. Again, I, I want everybody to be okay with it. I think having no roosters is silly. We were literally in an HOA in Phoenix, Arizona, and I lived on .10 acres, and we were allowed to have 25 rabbits or chickens, right? So, yes, birds can, can be loud, birds can be noisy. I didn't know when I moved here that there was a prohibition against roosters. And as Larry pointed out earlier, every now and then, you buy a six-pack of birds and you get a rooster in there. So under the current law, we either have to pack that rooster up and send them elsewhere or have them for dinner, or we need to find a way through it. So Amber, are you firm on two?
I feel like two is the most, is being, you know, considerate of those that don't necessarily want to live next door to a rooster crowing at 4:00 AM in the morning. So I mean, I don't know. I, I don't know. I just, I threw it out there because at the end of the day, you know, I want to hear what everybody else had to say, so.
Okay.
I don't know.
Mr. Wiskowak?
Are you good with two? This is yours.
I'm not crazy about it, no. I thought half acre was best. But if, if, if you guys are cool, I mean, if two's the answer, and that's what y'all think, then sure, I'm, I'm fine with that. But I think the smaller the property, the better I'm going to feel about it. But I, I get it. I totally understand. Again, you know, HOAs can, can prohibit, and, and I'm certain that they do. But so far, we've got two acres, one rooster per acre, 15 feet from the property line for enclosures. I can get behind that, if you guys can get behind that.
I'll take it. We can always address it if it becomes a nuisance or if it's
This is kind of one of those things that we talk about. And so far, according to Chief back there, nothing has, nothing has occurred. And at some point, sure, maybe, but.
And like Mr. Bar pointed out, they, they were not permitted. I'm willing to make a motion to send this to City Council.
For two acres?
Yes. Whatever adjustments Mr. Burris made.
Okay. So you guys feel good about two acres, one rooster per acre, 15 feet from the property line? Now, somebody can be in a residential lot and still be on 10 or 11 acres. But obviously, if they've got a farm, if they're ag, that prohibition doesn't, doesn't count in quite the same way. Is that right?
That's what I say. It depends on what zone you're in, to me. I mean, you know, you can, you can be ag right next to, to, you know, residential estate or whatever. You can have all that good roosters you want. What are they going to do? Nothing.
Right.
So.
Okay. So then, we've got a
Citizen comment, okay.
We've got a motion on the table. Oh, do we have a citizen coming? It's a weird time for it. You call it?
I never did allow it, though, before. So are there citizens out there that'd like to comment on this?
Bring it.
What brought this up was Rooster Larry. So how does that address him? I don't understand.
Oh, he's, he's gone.
He's been caught and gone.
Yeah, he's gone. I'll answer that because it was on me. I saw it on Facebook, and, and people were, people who lived in other towns even, were losing their minds over the fact that Larry was out and about and not being well-intended to. And so as I went and looked in the code, I think somebody said, "Well, roosters aren't even allowed." And I went to look at the code, and I saw, oh, what do you know, they're right.
He's just a stray?
He was just a stray. He's back home. He's fine. Yeah. Good question. He's been, he's been rehomed back to his, his house. He's good. Okay, so we have a motion on the table, two acres, one rooster per acre, 15 feet from the property line for the enclosure. I'm willing to second that.
Roll call.
Tim?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Move to City Council.
New business, a discussion of proposal regarding the emergency plan. Chief.
The first page of it, I mean, kind of explains the purpose and the scope of this. Can kind of talk more about it if you guys have any questions on it. Essentially, this is just a, to be considered first as a living document. This needs updated, I'd say, at least every two years. It's probably most common that I've seen. But this is basically establishing, establishing clear roles and responsibilities for the city's response to any kind of emergency. This doesn't have to just be for natural disasters. It could be terrorism, civil unrest, any number of different things that occur could trigger this. So it's just getting the city on the same page as, as far as what our response would be, how we mitigate and recover from that. So kind of spreading out the love through the departments within the city as roles and responsibilities to step up and fill in if, if something like this was to occur.
And is this something that we need to vote on?
I believe Mr. Latham is needing something, and he might have to explain a little bit more on that.
I think it's important that you actually pass it by resolution. Needs to be a document within the city. Therefore, when we, if we do ever have, and hopefully we'll never will, but have a major incident, that everything will be documented to make sure that they, we get FEMA and everybody else. So I would suggest doing it by
Okay.
Can you bring us a resolution?
Because then you can change it. There'll be some changes made.
Can you bring us a resolution?
Yeah, we don't have one in here.
No, but we can make one up.
Okay. So do we have to wait until Cal for that? Or can we see a resolution before that? Are you guys
I'll just, we'll just ask, we'll just ask Justin to pull one together. It should be pretty simple, just approving it.
I don't have any problem with that. From what I've seen from this, I mean, I don't have any problem with it.
Yeah, I'm fine.
We'll get the resolution by City Council. I think, I think we're okay with that.
Councilmember Montez, are you okay if, if we get a resolution for this and move this on through to the City Council meeting and look at that resolution then?
No, I don't have a problem with that. I did have a question for Chief Ginnison.
Yes.
If he's still at the mic.
He is.
Yes. Okay. Have, have we had to implement, even though this is an in-place, have we had to implement this at any time during your tenure?
Not to this scale. I mean, on, on a very, very small scale, the fire department essentially does this every time they go to a call. So they're, they're very versed at it, but nothing to this scale. Some of that potentially is probably due to we have not had the resources or the ability to implement anything like that. And even, even now.
Or hopefully not even the, the same place to where we need to.
Right. Even now, we'll be stretched thin on this.
Thank God.
The reality of this is if something was to occur here, while our, our resources will respond to it, if something affects Tawnytown, there's a very good chance it'll affect Springdale. So the assistance from them, they're going to be focused on their city, so Washington County, and then it's going to spread out to other areas to, to come in and assist on this. So realistically, the, the backside of this is, again, this plan models nationally what is done throughout, a lot of the, the flow of this, the language used in it. It's, it's commonly trained amongst police and fire, as well as emergency management departments across the country. So if anybody else comes in to assist the city, what we're doing and the steps we take will be in line with what they would be doing as well.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Dan.
I want to thank Mr. Latham and you, Chief, and all the other department heads that came together and put this together. And like I said, I don't have an issue with passing it to move to the city and then Justin getting us that, that resolution. So I'd like to make a motion to move this to City Council.
Second. Roll call.
Larry?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Moving to City Council.
Next, we have a discussion of
Next, we have a discussion of a park resolution. Mr. Latham.
Apologize, the actual resolution that you have in hand was what you passed last year, so it's the same. Same, we'll get it all kind of changed. But we would like to submit the same grant that we submitted last year for the outdoor recreational grant to construct the splash pad. As you know, last year, we ran into a little trouble not scoring enough points, and part of it was because we didn't have the Parks Commission, which we do now, or Parks Board. So, we'll be able to, I think, score a lot better this time. So, the resolution actually asks for additional funds needed to complete the project, which the total, which is the maximum you can apply for, is $250,000. I will tell you, we are going to have a public engagement meeting Monday, July 28th, that will not even, including this project, but also the All Abilities Playground. It'll also include the community center. We'll have the architect here. We'll have people filling out some evaluations and some comments on how they would like to see this, along with the outline of the Barrington 412 project. So, all four of those will be here. We'll get some community engagement in here with some comments. So, any questions?
What time is that meeting, on the 28th?
6:00. Yeah. Getting that all put together.
So, now, I guess we need to make a motion for a resolution to move on?
I'll make that motion.
Danny, second. Roll call.
Amber?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And Larry?
Yes.
Move to City Council.
We are going to take exactly six minutes. We will reconvene at 6:00. It happens. Yeah. Yeah. Is everyone ready? We're back in session. Now, we are going to have a discussion of the purchasing, excuse me, purchasing manual. Mr. Latham.
Yes, it's been almost three months since I actually brought this to everybody's attention. I will tell you, we did take a lot of time vetting, getting some comments back from staff. We did find out that the credit card area, along with the travel policies, are currently within our personnel handbook, so that's why those have been taken out. Didn't want to have a problem there. The only change that I have is on page 16. On page 6, it basically states the actual, you know, what can you expend or expenditures, and who has to sign off on them. But on page 16, it says $1,000 instead of $1,500. So, I suggest we make that change.
Hold on, I don't see that on page 16.
Nor do I.
Is it the...
Which one?
I don't see what you're talking about on page 16 of the draft. Is it the draft or is it the regular?
It's on the draft. It's down to where it says, it's under regular purchase orders. Down in the middle, it says, "Purchase orders will be required for all items purchased inside the city," that it should say, instead of $1,000, $1,500.
I think our page 16 is different than yours. Could you show us yours?
It's definitely different.
I don't know.
Could it be 15, maybe?
This is what was...
Will you show us what page you were looking at? Please, and thank you.
Okay, so you're on the...
That looks different.
You're on the actual, you're not the red line copy. You're on the second.
Oh.
Okay. Sorry, I was looking at the red line copy.
Is it on 18? Is it a strikeout? You struck out a whole paragraph? I just see $1,000. I'm not sure if it's it or not.
We're on the...
Is it under credit? No, probably not.
Say that again, Amber.
Under regular purchase orders, right at the top, A.
Yeah, on 16, that should read, both of them should read $1,500, which reflects what was stated on page 6.
So, the sixth and seventh line of the first paragraph, chapter 5, page 16?
Right.
Okay.
Goes to $1,500.
Yeah.
All right, I got you now.
Now, this might be a silly question mark, but why $1,500 instead of $1,000 or $3,000 or $10?
Well, we talked about that with the staff. And if you see on page 6, it requires approval.
Right.
So, a supervisor or department head can spend up to $1,500.
Okay.
Without any approval by...
So, yeah.
So...
Why not have it?
Scott is a foreman. He doesn't need my approval to spend up to $1,500.
Okay. So, that's only...
I might require him, I might require him to get a few quotes if he's buying something. And that reflects on the purchase order that you see on the backside of this here.
So, if I want to go buy, if I've got a city card, right, how many city cards are out there?
I only have one for most street, talking about credit card.
I mean, how many people, how many people have access to this, to purchase whatever, whether it's a credit card or, I mean, are these all POs?
They won't need all POs.
These are always POs? Purchase orders? They don't. Okay. So, here's my question. Who has access to buy a thing on behalf of the city? How many people have that authority?
Well, I'm the only one out of my group that has a credit card.
Okay.
Okay, so, street and planning.
Do you have one, Mr. Artemani, as a foreman? No, okay.
He comes to me. He comes to me if he needs a credit card.
Okay.
Brad comes to me if he needs a credit card.
Okay.
Yeah. Those are kept...
All right.
In my desk. No, I mean, typically, if they're needing to spend something, they'll, you know, give me a call or come by the office and say, "Hey, I need to get XYZ. It's going to cost XYZ." And then I'll give them some kind of approval. What this does is, is it creates a way to be able to make sure that we're getting the best dollar amount for what we're spending, instead of just going up in somewhere and figuring out, this is where we need to spend it. So, with the $1,500, they, the foreman, like in Scott's position, or Brad, would not need my approval. Okay? Anything above that, yes. Would need my approval, which would be the department head. And then anything between $2,000 and $20,000, or $1,999, is the mayor. Mayor has to sign that. So, anything over $2,000, she will need to sign it. And then anything above $20,000, the council has to approve.
I did have one other question on that same section, the last sentence.
What was that one, Mike?
On chapter 5, A, regular purchase orders.
Page 16?
Page 16 on the, 17 on the red line copy, if anybody wants to see it, because that's what I want to address. It is, it's scratched out sales tax identification number. Does the W-9 cover for not having a sales tax identification number? Is there a reason that sales tax identification number was scratched?
I think that's probably state law, but if you want to put it there, we can.
I just didn't know, the W-9 may cover it. I don't handle dealing with sales tax.
Yeah, Mike, I'm sorry, I don't see that. Could you?
Okay, on 17 of the red line copy, the last line that's stricken, all payments shall require a valid 1099, and obviously, that's changed to W-9 and a sales tax identification number. But in the draft that we're going to vote on, which is the unread line version, page 16, chapter 5, A...
Sales tax identification?
Sales tax identification number.
I don't know why somebody wouldn't have a tax ID. So, maybe it's an or, all service, all payments...
It may need to be both.
Yeah, I think it should be and.
Okay.
But like I said, I didn't...
Okay.
I don't deal in sales tax, so I don't, I don't know. W-9 may cover it. Do you guys know? Or do you need to have that sales tax identification number in addition to the W-9?
Well...
And a sales tax identification number?
Sales tax identification, you should have...
Should have both. Okay, so let's do an and on that one, then.
Okay.
Thank you.
With those changes, I would ask that you move that to council.
A W-9 is a request for a taxpayer identification number and certification.
But it's federal, right? Does it also cover state?
Yeah, well, it's on the federal end. There would be another form like it, probably on the state side, that we need to figure out. But maybe it's covered that way. But because it's a request for a tax ID, by its very definition, it would have to have both the W-9 and the tax ID.
Okay.
I mean, we would have to ask for both.
Thank you.
So, with corrections noted.
All changes in there.
Yeah.
So...
I look for approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve with the aforementioned changes.
Second. Roll call.
Are you there, Mr. Montez?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, Daniel?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
To answer Mr. Woskowak's question, Arkansas uses the federal IRS Form W-9, so that covers it.
So, W-9 might be it.
So, it might be all we need, and maybe that's...
No, well, W-9 plus the tax ID. I just mean, there's not a state...
I'm sure Mr. Agnew vetted this thing.
Yeah, there's not a state-numbered, my point is, there's not a state-numbered form.
Okay.
Next, we have a discussion of the sale of the Barrington property. Again, Mr. Latham.
This has to do with the house that's currently on the property. If you remember, the contract we had with North Rock required us to remove the home. There are a couple of individuals that have an interest in the house and would like to move it. So, that would save us some money from tearing it down.
I don't, I'm so sorry, I don't recall that being part of the deal. I voted against it, so maybe that part went by me. But part of that, that deal was that...
The sale of the home was to rezone it.
Okay.
To get the house torn down or removed.
Okay.
Yep, that was part of it.
Okay, carry on.
So, what you have here is basically given authorization for Mayor Russell to advertise for sealed bids that would actually be opened up here in the chambers to sell the house and that it be removed. You see, I put some specific things, sale of the term, must move, remove the structure on the property, including a timeline. They'll have to put a timeline on when they're going to do it. Of course, the land's not included, sealed bids, price removal plan, proposed schedule. They'll have to have insurance requirements and...
Those bids will come to us, right?
Right, those bids will come to you all. That's all it does, is give you, give us authorization to go ahead and send it out, to get it advertised.
I got no problem with that.
Okay.
So, I seek a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mike?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Hello? Amber?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Move to City Council.
Next, we have a discussion about the community building. Imagine, Mr. Latham.
Yeah, we've got a couple of these grants that have to go in by August 1st. One is the one we just, we talked about. This one's a new one. This is through the Arkansas Economic Development Commission. Focuses a lot on community buildings. So, I will tell you right now that we have an opportunity to get about $350,000 to apply for, which would be about 50% of what the actual cost of that facility is going to be. I think roughly, the architect mentioned somebody between $600,000 and $700,000. So, what we're going to have is, we do have a resolution. I can't believe it all. All we do have to do is fill in the little thing. But it's to submit the application. It identifies on that final whereas, has proof that they have raised X amount of dollars, which would be part of the bond money, or if our lovely foundation receives funding that's less than less. It can be even cash donations or in-kind donations that can apply to that. So, we'll be working on that, and then we'll request the $350,000.
We just don't have the figures that we're going to put in the last whereas or...
Well, it says that it's furnished proof that they have raised. We can put $350,000 in there.
Okay.
And then down below, where it says, "Let it be resolved for the purposes of securing grant in the amount of $350,000."
Got you. Makes sense to me.
Comments? Concerns?
None.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve this, push it on to council.
Anybody else can second besides me?
I'll second that, Amber.
Thanks.
Roll call.
Mike?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Move to City Council.
Next, we have a discussion on the sewer evaluation plan. James, I see you've got your right-hand man sitting up there next to you.
Yes, sir. Excuse me. So, in your packet, you have a copy of a letter that the mayor received from ADEQ. And that letter is a result of complaints that were lodged against the city by customers as far as the odor at the lift station on South Penalto. It's pretty common for ADEQ to ask for a sewer system evaluation study, or SSES they call it. They've got an acronym for it, so it's something they do all the time. So, that's what they've requested of the city. And basically, of course, the letter kind of lines it out for you, but they want us to inspect manholes and the sewer line that the leachate goes into, along with some testing to verify, you know, what the constituents are in the wastewater at the lift station and downstream. So, this is basically just informational to let you know that we're going to move forward with this report or this study. going to move forward with this, this report or this study. I talked to Zach. Zach is going to write the report for us. It's going to be, it's going to be fairly involved. I'll make sure that everyone gets a copy of it once we get it put together. But, and we've got a fairly short time to get it. They, they requested this by the end of July. We may ask for an extension on that because it's, like I said, it's going to take some time to get all this together. Because not only are we doing the wastewater, the leachate, we're going to try to address the, the air quality at the lift station. And hence the, the quote we've got in there from Carbon Chicken about doing some bio chars, what they call it, in our, in our air scrubber that we have at the lift station. Before we do that, they want to do some air quality testing and then replace the media in this air scrubber and then do some more air quality testing to verify whether or not it's working. And all of this is fairly expensive, and I say that to say this. In, in the original contract with Waste Management to take the leachate, which was signed in 2010, I might also mention that it has a twenty-year expiration. So it's getting, it's getting close. And, you know, who knows what's going to happen in the next five years, but at that point, the contract could not be renewed if the city desires to do that. Anyway, in that contract, it says, in addition to any other charge provided for by this contract, Waste Management agrees to pay, pay the cost of charges or expenses incurred by the city as a direct result of Waste Management becoming a user of the city sewer system, in which, but for Waste Management being a user of the city sewer system, the city would not have incurred. These additional charges shall be limited to an additional charge for any improper use of the sewer system by Waste Management, which causes the city to incur costs, fines, or penalties, or any additional charge the parties may mutually agree upon in writing from time to time. I take that to mean that I can pass all this cost on to Waste Management to perform this, this study.
That's what it sounds like to me.
And that's what I intend to do.
So has there been any discussion with them about this letter that we received and?
Not yet, no.
Okay, so, and, and I had a couple of questions. It's maybe a little bit off the topic, but the couple of things that were behind the Richard Brown and the Carl Holly and the Carbon Chicken, do they, they have something to do with this project?
Yeah, Richard Brown is with GTS Labs, and they will do any and all of the testing that we have to do, whether it be the leachate testing or air quality.
Okay.
And Carl Holly has the, the truck to do the sewer camera. As a matter of fact, we've done some of that already.
Okay.
And the last one is the Carbon Chicken, which is the, the filter media that, to put in our air scrubber.
And that's a little bit more expensive, I see. It's a kind of a monthly recurring cost. I assume that's something that we'll have to address as a council, or is that something that?
Well, like I said, if I understand this contract correctly, I can just pass that on to Waste Management every month. We do testing on the leachate, and that goes through GTS Labs.
Okay.
And that's included on the, the bill, the invoice that Waste Management gets every month, is that laboratory testing, so.
Sounds good. Have they never kicked back on that?
No, no. And as a matter of fact, it's kind of a long story, but since we've had surcharges in place, if you recall, we actually put those in the wastewater rates last time we did a rate increase, which was back in October, I believe. Before then, those were not actually in the contract with Waste Management. We started charging them probably about a year prior to that. But anyway, the surcharges sometimes can be as much as forty thousand dollars a month.
Yes.
And, but that's a pass-through kind of for the city. We don't make any money off of that. The NACA plant charges us that amount for the extra treatment of the wastewater. So we just pass that directly on to Waste Management.
And no, no blocking from them, apparently?
No.
All right. Okay, that, that clears that up a lot. Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Yeah, yeah, no problem. Like I say, this is more informational than anything unless I have some kickback from Waste Management, which I don't really expect they, they will. I'm going to visit with them and just tell them what we got going. We're going to pass these, these costs along.
I think that's more than fair.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Levitt, citizen comment?
Let's see. On June eighteenth, Mr. Jason Bolinball from the Arkansas ADEQ sent me a letter, said, Mr. Levitt, good afternoon. Last Thursday, you had emailed Inspector Will Cody regarding his complaint evaluation of the city of Tonty Town's pump station at eighteen thirty-six South Penato. Inspector Cody's evaluation findings were based on his observations, and no sampling of the pump station's influent was conducted. The pump station was operational at the time of the inspection, and the DEQ Office of Water Quality has submitted a request to the city of Tonty Town to submit a sanitary sewer collection system evaluation plan to address odors associated with the collection system. Mr. Will Cody was the inspector, and there was no issues found, but all this is caused by Waste Management not pre-treating, and I think that's already coming up to be discussed or, or addressed. But to me, it's more like a, the ADEQ is, is trying to put Tonty Town as responsible party for the issues that Waste Management is causing. And I believe somebody should reach out to Mr. Bolinball. I sent each of y'all an email, so you can kind of look at it and follow it up. But I'll also send you the one that I sent to Mr. Cody that prompted this one. But when people are forced to leave their home because they can't breathe, whose responsibility is that? That's my question. You know, if nobody does nothing and that person is out of their home for a month, what are they supposed to do? Nobody knows. You know, how do you take care of your citizens when you can't control the issues that are being forced on you because they can? Thank you.
Can I just clarify something?
Absolutely. Mr. Latham?
When the state says, you know, they're looking at us, originally when, what should have happened back when they decided to run the leachate into the city sewer system, they should have required, the city should have required Waste Management to put a pre-treatment facility on their property. This is the only industry I know around that doesn't require a pre-treatment. If you look at the contents that, that they've been testing right now, the ammonium content is way up, way up. So if anything, what I see out of all this stuff, and once he gets this evaluation done, in my opinion, the city needs to require Waste Management, and it's going to take a lot of money, talking about ten million dollars to put a pre-treatment facility on there if they're going to discharge into our system. That's all in my comment.
Why can't the state make that? I mean, I don't have.
Well, it's really up to the city to require that. It's not up to the state.
Okay.
So, so back then, I don't know. I, I really don't.
Any idea when this started happening? Was it the two thousand ten contract? Wow, all right.
So, you know, that, you have the control of that, and you can require that. And I think once he gets all this study done and you kind of figure what's going on, that would be the big discussion with Waste Management. If we're talking a lot, a lot of money, they're going to have to cough up. But.
Well, it affects more than just, I mean, if you're, it affects more than just the citizens of Tonty Town, I would think. You know, that stuff doesn't just stop at our borders.
So.
It goes over into neighbors.
Discuss this with other municipalities, too.
I might also mention that, as Mr. Levitt said, ADEQ called me one afternoon and said, hey, we've had a report. Can we meet out at South Penato Lift Station? So I went out there and met with them. Mr. Cody, William Cody, is a inspector for the water division. So basically, he said, when I got there, he said, you know, this is not really my area of expertise. He said, I can tell you're not affecting any water, you know, any creek or any river by, you know, what's happening here at the lift station. It's strictly an air issue. So it was kind of a waste of time. He did tell me, or ask me, to put up a sign that said, you know, city-owned property, please call this number if you, to, to report an emergency. But that was about all of the, yeah. They're just kind of covering their bases.
Bases. That is not the word I thought you were going to use.
That's the word I was struggling with.
Okay, bases works.
Anyway, I'll, I'll be glad to share more with you as, as we go forward through this and I, I get to visit with Waste Management. Can't wait to see, you know, how well we can work together on that. Hopefully, it's a good thing.
Hopefully.
Thanks. I need it.
Don't leave. Next, we have a discussion on a work order for industrial area elevated water storage tank.
Yes, sir.
Tell me more.
Pardon?
I said, tell me more.
I can tell you, I'll tell you some, and then if you have more questions. Larry Gregory's here to give you all the details. But anyway, so we're fortunate in that we've been working on the design of this tank now for three years. So we've been able to pay for the engineering design of it as we went along. So that, that part is all done. We paid for it out of pocket, so to speak. But for this, the administration and inspection of this project, going forward, I wanted to get it into a, a work order or task order so that it's clean when we report it to, or turn in the invoices for the reimbursement from the, from the bond money, or not reimbursement, but payment by the bond money. So anyway, this is a worst-case scenario. If you read that contract, it says, you know, for, I think it's about six, works out to about six hours a week for the administration and maybe twelve hours or so a week for inspection. We're going to do most of the inspection on the water line. I've asked Larry to help us out with the inspection on the tank itself, the vertical parts, since we don't really have any experience with that to speak of. So once the tank is erected, there won't be near as much inspection needed on that, and I feel like that the, the final price will come in considerably lower than what they've estimated. And if you have any questions about the details of the contract, like I say, Larry's here to, to answer those for you. Did I forget anything?
I don't believe so. Anyone?
Any questions?
Daniel?
Councilman?
No, no.
So I will have a resolution for you at the council meeting to, to sign this agreement.
So I guess if you're going to have a resolution, we need a motion to approve then, correct?
Forward it, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Seeking a motion. Mike, Mike make the motion?
I will make that motion.
Okay. A second, please.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Larry?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Moving to city council.
Next, we have a discussion on rezoning five eighty-one South Barrington Road. Mr. Spurlock?
All right, ladies and gentlemen of the council, what you have before you here is a rezoning request. This is the city property, which Mark was talking about, which we are going to ask that you review this, to move this to city council. This was voted unanimously at the last planning commission, and so they were taking this to move, my eyesight's getting bad, R three to C two. That's what the request was, and once again, this was approved unanimously. If you have any questions, we'll do our very best to answer those, but this is the city property in discussion a little while ago.
Citizen comment? Counsel, questions, comments?
I have none.
I hate to spot zone, but every now and then we find ourselves in a bind, and that's the only way through it. And that seems to be the case here.
Yeah, and the property that's adjacent to it, that's the North Rock property, which they will be doing a commercial project there as well. And the property just to the south of it is commercial as well.
That was my next question. Thank you, Mr. Spurlock.
Seeking a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I hear a second.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Amber?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Move to city council.
Next, we have a discussion on rezoning parcel number eight three zero dash three seven six one five dash zero zero seven. Mr. Spurlock?
All right, thank you again. This property is owned by Lip Spaces. This is the property that's located over off Fletcher and right behind K and K Vet. That is a part of their property. Once again, they brought this before city council. Now, the way this worked, that property had two zoning areas, and which you can see, one was C one, another one was agriculture, which was previously, I don't know how that came about, but that's the way it was zoned. But they are looking to rezone this to industrial. They have plans to expand their business, business project, and so city council, or sorry, planning commission wants again to approve this unanimously. The only caveat I have with this was the future land use. Future land use showed more of a commercial transition, commercial residential transition. However, with the projects and with the current owners, being industrial, planning staff, and once again, planning commission did not have a problem with this. So we do have representatives here. If you have any questions, Chase Heinrich is here. Owners are here, so if you have any questions to ask, they are here to help answer anything you may have.
Citizens? Counsel?
I would, I would love to hear from the owners and, and Mr. Heinrich. As much as I dislike spot zoning, when we go away from ag or light commercial and we move into something like industrial, I'm never excited about that. Again, I understand there are reasons for it, which is why you're here, I suspect.
That is correct.
So, Mr. Heinrich, please carry on.
Yeah, so Chase Heinrich's with DCI.
I'm, I'm mispronouncing your name.
Well, it's okay.
We, we, we met earlier.
It is, no, it's all right.
Henricks?
Henrichs, it's all right.
I know your first name is Chase.
That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Heinrich. Appreciate you being here. So sorry.
As Mr. Spurlock mentioned, we're abutting an industrial zone. Lip Space owns this property and operates the K and K Vet supply building, is wanting to expand that, and that, that expansion requires an industrial zoning or would best be, best be suited for such. With Fletcher Road kind of cutting this property in not quite half, but into two, it, it made sense from our standpoint logically to expand the zoning of the industrial down to this portion, kind of fill in that area and allow them to expand their business and, you know, help bring more jobs and more workforce into this area and continue to grow their company.
So what exactly is changing? So what exactly is changing? You can see the picture up in front of us here, right? So I know, I know where their building is, and I, and I see that.
Yeah, so that cursor highlighting that kind of wedge shape, and there above, north of Fletcher Road, is the section that we're requesting. So it's 9.19 acres. It's not the entire parcel. It's just that section that is north of Fletcher.
It's north of Fletcher, not south of Fletcher.
Correct. Yeah, the remaining areas will remain as zoned.
And right now, what's there?
Yeah, and currently built, nothing.
I knew you were going to say that. That's the part that hurts my heart. But, okay. Okay. And then, and then what's, what are we doing with that space?
I believe the long-term plan is to expand, or maybe even build a new building for K&amp;K Vet Supply. As of right now, I don't believe any large-scale plans have been submitted, but that is the intent.
And that's 1.92 acres?
9.19.
I'm sorry, 9.19. That's a, that's a, it looks, it looks smaller on the, on the map. Okay. Okay, thank you.
I'm here if you have any additional questions.
Appreciate it.
Amber, questions? Mike? Danny?
No, sir. I don't have any questions on it. I'd like to make a motion to approve and move to city council.
I'll second it, so Mike doesn't have to.
Okay, roll call.
Daniel?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Moves to city council.
Thank you.
Next, we have a discussion on additional improvement cost with ground zero construction.
You know, if you'd, if you'd been first, you'd have been out of here.
That's okay, I can go last, you know, Z, end of the alphabet, makes sense, right?
Ending on a high note.
Ending on a high note. All right, what you got before you is a quote to do a little extra work on Clink Road. So right now, as you're all aware, Renly Ray is under development. We have a land use agreement with the developer to improve certain aspects of the road. What this agreement targets is the Jerry Bratcher property. That was not part of the original agreement, and right now, he's getting hammered pretty bad with some flooding. So I, we, I think from a city perspective, we'd love to see Clink get extended a little bit further, at least to that next field. When that develops, now we have a complete Clink section, right? Or Clint's section, if I'm saying that wrong. Either way, but more importantly, we're going to extend the storm sewer, curb and gutter up to that property to pick up the point discharge that's happening from Bariloche. It's coming down the drainage swell in front of the agricultural property. It's actually staying in the swell, but as soon as it hits Jerry's, the swell kind of dissipates. The infrastructure's way too small, and this would be a great way to improve it while this development's under construction. So kind of piggybacking off of this and using that development group to build some, a little bit of extra road to improve drainage in the area. So I had Kraft and Toll produce a cost estimate. I have verified the costs. These are pretty good numbers in relation to standard construction numbers in the area. And want to hear your thoughts and see if we can move this forward.
Well, I've seen the mess that's been created down there. I mean, I know Mr. Bratcher, and he informed me of this, and so I paid a visit after a rainstorm. It's, gets close to his house.
Sure.
And it never did before, so.
Right.
It certainly needs to be addressed, or somebody's going to be buying my house.
I like that we can, we're able to piggyback off of them for a cost savings and improved drainage, so it's good.
Okay, so I've got some questions.
Sure.
Generally, it would not be the role of city government to step in and help a private citizen with taxpayer dollars.
Sure.
I understand there are extended circumstances from time to time, and this may be just one of those occasions. But did we cause the problem, or did Renly Ray?
Actually, I would say that he's probably suffering more from Bariloche than anything else, right? Which is...
Sure, yeah, I've talked about that a lot here, especially when we start putting in more concrete, we get more of that. So, again, we're talking about taxpayer dollars from all the taxpayers. To pay for one private citizen. And so I, I need to understand why that's the right move.
I would take a look and say, this fits more with the overall improvement of Clink Road, right? In the sense that, yeah, we are going across one property owner, and it's going to help with flood mitigation, but it gets us one step closer to having a complete Clink cross-section in this residential area, right? Should that agricultural field develop in the near future between Bariloche or Renly Ray, we're going to have this little piece just isolated. If we had the money, at the time, I was suggested trying to get this improvement with Renly Ray when that original development did come through. But after watching the rains, I think there's a, I, I think we can merge these two together, where there's additional flooding and continue to improve Clint's to a more comprehensive section, all the way down from Morrisani in these residential areas.
Okay. With that comment, I think I probably misunderstood this. This is a city project that benefits the city of Tawney Town, but it happens to go across this parcel.
Right.
Owned by the Bratcher family.
Right.
And they have had some trouble that this will help to rectify, so they're on board.
Right.
But this is a city project that has to come through a private citizen's parcel to make it work.
Yes.
And we've gotten their okay to do that.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. That's how I'd look at it. I mean, this, the subdivision is improving a section of Clink in their vicinity, right? Per code, they are obligated to improve the portion that their property directly fronts, right? So there are already improvements. We're, we're just extending this road to get the, get the full section a little further. And then if that, if that field ever develops in the near future, we'll have a pretty much complete section all the way down from Morrisani to the, to Bariloche.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate the explanation.
Any more questions, council?
Any questions, councilmember Montes?
No, sir.
All right, I guess then, I am...
Just, just want...
Okay.
Mike, so how far down does this extend? Just past the Bratcher properties that we're talking about?
Yeah, in this iteration, we've got a, some concrete pipe and a flared-in section extended past. It's probably going to end right at that transitional zone from the field to Bratcher's property. If you go out there, you can, it's actually in bad shape right now because they just ran a water line through it, so the ditch is all kind of torn up. But before the water line went in, it was a nice ditch, but as soon as it hits that property, there's just no, there's no west side bank, it just spills out, right? And then Bratcher's got like a 12-inch culvert with a 30-inch culvert pointing at it, right? The math just don't work. So this would, this is definitely a citywide improvement, and like I said, it's just a, it's a piece of Clink for the comprehensive section between Morrisani and Bariloche.
Are we looking for a motion to...
Yeah, what do we do with this? I don't see a resolution.
Is there going to be, is there going to be a resolution?
We'll put a resolution.
Okay. So I guess a motion to approve a resolution.
I'll make that motion.
Go ahead, Mike. You knew you wanted to.
I'm waiting on you, Tim. I will second.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mike?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Moving to city council.
We had one more.
Yes, sir.
We have one more comment, because it's good news.
Please, Mark.
Remember, we had a work session on Fletcher, okay?
Oh, if you're interested to follow up, I did have a, I didn't hear from him last week, so I was getting a little nervous after. But apparently Eric was on vacation all last week, that's why I didn't hear from him. So I did talk to him today, and they are still interested in performing that work. So we're going to draft something and get it in front of you for review.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Status update.
All right, now, we have comments from our council. Amber?
I have no comments tonight, just thank you for being here.
Mr. Burris?
Thank you, chairman. You know, we're always happy to answer the questions of polite citizens who come to us, and we appreciate your comments, we appreciate your involvement, we appreciate you hold us accountable to a high ethical standard. We do not, however, typically respond to group texts, or allegations, or accusations. And if you wish to politely reach out to me, I'd be happy to answer all your questions anytime. I suspect my fellow councilmembers feel the same way. We have had many discussions with our attorney, Mr. Eitman, over the two-week period that was mentioned earlier, and we had very difficult decisions to make, and we were thankful to have Mr. Eitman's legal expertise as our guide. We worked to act justly. We worked to protect our city's interests from a lawsuit, to protect our mayor from a lawsuit, and we acted to benefit all staff members involved as information became known through interviews and more digging. We care about our staff, we care about our mayor, we care about our citizens. Our mayor may not always have the opportunity to contact the attorney before making every single decision, as she has a lot on her plate. And so sometimes, changes need to be made to correct errors, and the city council does so after many conversations regarding legal requirements with our attorney. The mayor makes many decisions separate from this legislative body, and this council is often not aware of the actions taking place under her domain, because we're legislative and not executive like our mayor. Each mayor operates differently and communicates or does not communicate as frequently with council, based on their own leadership style, and that's perfectly fine. It's the job of this council to do our role while the mayor operates within her role with her very accommodating budget. I understand it's easy to jump to ideas of conspiracy, conflict, malfeasance, when you don't know all the work that's going on behind the scenes, as we question our attorney and we interview people involved in whatever thing we're dealing with. But this council has been above board, and we happily answer questions for any citizens who have questions. So please, just feel free to ask us anytime, no need to accuse, just ask, and then you can accuse if you feel that's necessary. We, and, and other news, we've had some technological problems, which we have seen this evening. I've experienced those in the past myself. I personally had difficulty connecting to meetings and speaking remotely, and it's, of course, nothing personal, it just happens sometimes. And I want to take the time to thank Mr. Spurlock, Mr. Clark-Madeline, who not only do so much for our city in their assigned roles, but who also help us in our technology as technology experts during meetings. Thank you all for your hard work. Thank you all for researching, for asking hard questions, for attending meetings when you're able to. We want integrity and transparency as we work for the citizens in all matters, and we appreciate that you hold us to the highest standards, because that's what you, the taxpayer who we work for, deserves. Thank you for being here this evening.
Danny?
I just want to thank everybody for coming out, and I'll just kind of piggyback off Mr. Burris, but I want to thank you for your efforts that you put in on the IT part. I think today, tonight, just the way that I'm on here, you know, I wasn't able to jump on teams, but I think it's, I think it's a reception problem on my end, you know? I don't, I don't think it's anything to do with teams, but I have been on the other side where, you know, the microphone's not connected. But I think we've gotten that kink fixed, and, you know, sometimes you can't, you happen to be somewhere where reception's not the best in order for teams to work for, for you, and I think that's what the case is with me tonight. So thank you, Mr. Burris, for calling, allowing me to call in and, and kind of use your microphone as a, as a way to work around the, the technical difficulties. And everybody have a safe, safe night and safe drive home.
All right, I guess the best of 4th of July to everybody. And that's all I've got to say, and now Mike Moscosiak. He said he didn't have a comment.
It's all right, you could have left me out, I'd been just fine. I'm not, I'm not going to keep this long at all. Just want to thank Light Express for hosting coffee and conversation. It's always good to see people in the community come out. I always see people I hadn't seen in a while, or I see people that I see frequently, and it's a good opportunity to mingle with the business people of the town. I, I just want to, you know, Mr. Clark, the, the explanation about the letter and all the stuff that came with it, I was kind of at a loss when that came in, but, you know, I just want to thank you guys for all the work that you do that we don't see, because there's obviously a lot that goes into what's happening with that particular project, and that's only one. So, you know, you guys, we come up here for a couple hours a month, sometimes a little bit longer, and you guys are putting in the work that we don't always get to see and appreciate. So, and I know most of you are on extended hours from your day that you've already been here. So, you know, I appreciate it, and I'll, I'm glad to get enlightened on, on these things that y'all are doing that we, we don't always see. And happy safe, or happy and safe 4th of July, and God bless America.
Rhonda, would you like to say anything?
No.
Looking for a motion to adjourn?
I've ever been asked for a call.
Motion to adjourn?